Evening and welcome to tonight's virtual general election candidates forum. Co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Woodby Island and Snow Isle Libraries. My name is Diane Fessler Macaluso and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Woodby Island. I'll be this evening's moderator. My fellow league panelists is Joanna Room's timekeeper. Carol Pulliam is our Zoom platform manager and Karen Bolster-Stead provides additional technical support. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages voters to be informed, active participants in government. Snow Isle Library's mission includes providing equitable community access to knowledge and resources. Our partnership enables us to pool our resources to provide neutral and unbiased information to the public. Check out our respective websites for further information. I'd like to welcome the panel of candidates participating in tonight's forum, which will have three segments. The first segment will be the Coopville School Board candidates Nancy Conard for position two, Brian Sherman for position three, and Morgan White for position five. The second segment will be candidates for Langley City Council. Thomas Gill for position one and Savannah Erickson for position five. Dominique Emerson running for position two declined to participate in this forum. The third segment will be candidates of South Woodby School Board candidates Andrea Down for position two and Gwendy Gablin and Anne Johnson running for position five. All candidates receive copies of our league's forum policy and the ground rules, as well as recording releases advisories. These documents outline forum structure, expectations of civil discourse, and our commitment to treat all participants with fairness and respect. Since this forum is not a debate, candidates are asked to focus on their own ideas and proposed policies. This forum is being recorded by the league. A link for viewing it will be posted on our website. No other recording is permitted. Any use of the recording requires approval by the League of Women Voters of Woodby Island, and then with the caveat that it must be broadcast in its entirety. Candidates are not allowed to edit or use footage for campaign purposes. The format of this evening will be a standard Q and A. The questions have been selected in advance by our forum committee, and none of the questions have been disclosed to candidates prior to this forum. The moderator will pose all the questions. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer all the questions. The order of candidates in respect to questions has been determined in advance by league organizers to ensure a random and fair sequence. The first responder to a question will have ninety seconds to answer. The remaining candidates will have sixty seconds to answer. When each candidate's time is up, the timekeeper will show a red card or say time. Each candidate will then have two minutes for a closing statement. As I mentioned, tonight's forum will consist of three segments. In each case, when candidates have concluded their closing statement, we will then transition to the next segment and so on. So let's begin with the candidates for Coopville School Board. Nancy Conard for position two, Brian Sherman for position three, and Morgan White for position five. Question one. What role should schools play in addressing a student's mental health and emotional health needs? And this is going to go first to Nancy Conard, and Nancy, you have ninety seconds.
Well, students' mental and emotional health is a huge piece of their ability to learn in a positive environment. And so it's as important as how we present materials for them to learn as it is to make sure that they're comfortable and in good health. In our school district, we do have counselors that are working with students. We also are providing training to our instructional staff so that they know how to look out for the needs of the students and to provide assistance or support as needed. I think it's become an even greater issue since COVID and things that were turned upside down during that time. And so we spend a lot of time making sure that kids are in the best position to learn in the safest environment.
Thank you. Morgan White, you have sixty seconds to respond.
Thank you. Obviously, this is a huge issue that our school is, and I would say all schools post-COVID, are looking at supporting. We are, you know, limited on the island to the resources that are available around us. And so we're trying to figure out how we can how we can access counseling services that might not just be on the island. Or even if potentially if healthcare needs need to come closer to school and that we need to be a part of supporting students' health even on campus. And so we play a really important role in this because it's a barrier to learning and we want to remove barriers so that our students can learn.
Thank you. And Brian Sherman, you have sixty seconds to respond.
Yeah, I agree with what both Nancy and Morgan stated here. I mean, our students spend the majority of their weeks and time in our schools and beyond the services we can provide creating that community environment where they feel safe and open enough to be vulnerable and to be able to learn is one of the most important things. So I think from my standpoint, being on board, something that I'm focused on and I was looking for is creating that open environment for students. From what I've seen early on, I haven't been on the board too long now, but that's where the board is focused and that's where our energy has been focused through policy the last year and the years that I haven't been on the board. So again, the role we play is ensuring that that community and that environment is safe for students to be able to be vulnerable.
Thank you. So this is question two. How will you balance community input with experts' recommendations when making policy decisions? And Morgan White, this goes to you first. You have ninety seconds.
This is a great question. So our board has broken up our roles to subcommittees. And so I am actually on our policy subcommittee along with one of our other directors, Allison Pereira. And we've been talking about this a lot. So as we work to adopt policies, we want to be sure that before those are ever fully adopted, the people who are greatly impacted by them have a chance to see them. So our process has been to make sure that our policies get sent to, you know, the particular staff members who would have a great deal of input. And we always bring those to workshops for discussion. And our workshops are open to our community. There's an opportunity for conversation and question after our workshop. And we have new student board reps on our board. And so we're excited about working with them to look at policy from a student perspective, too. So we're always trying to find ways to get as much input as possible. It's really important to the process.
Thank you. Brian Sherman, you are next up, and you have sixty seconds.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the things that I've found most encouraging about being on the board thus far is exactly what Morgan was talking about there, the level of collaboration and balance that we've been able to strike in policy decisions that have been made. You know, a lot of the work that I've seen go on recently is just ensuring that the policies are updated and reflect the current standards that are set forth by the governing bodies that we operate within. That's, you know, met with a lot of discussion and a lot of time, which is what's necessary when you go through these, even, you know, you know, regardless of how big the policy is or how seemingly small it is, there's a lot of time and energy put into that and ensuring that we have, you know, expert recommendations, of course, but making sure that the community, not just the teachers and people in the school district, but the families and everybody understand the implications of policies that we're putting into place. So for me, looking at where I fit into that, I just will continue the path that my predecessors before me here have set and ensure that the community feels engaged and that it's all been heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nancy Conard, you have sixty seconds also.
Thank you. We start out discussing policy changes or improvements at a workshop meeting at the board, which is open to the public, and we generally have a turnout there. The information that we discuss at those meetings is available to the community. And then we formally go through a policy review where we have a first hearing of the policy. And then this next meeting, we have a second reading and adoption of the policy. So there's really two or three opportunities for the community to look at what we're and to hear what we're talking about. Expert recommendations, I mean, the good news is, is generally when we have an outside person or somebody in the house who is the expert, they anticipate what we're going to hear and they can share with us, here's the way you might take care of that, or here's another angle you might consider in your policy that'll be more responsive to the community interest that's being shown here. We spend a lot of time on our policy and I think have very good thoughtful conversation.
Thank you. Okay. Question three. How would you evaluate whether the district is meeting its academics and operational goals? And Brian, this goes to you first, so you'll have ninety seconds.
Thank you. I think number one, we have regular touchpoints with administrators within the district that allow us to be able to evaluate interim between meetings, how we're progressing and how we're looking at goals. That's matched with multiple meetings a year to discuss where we're hitting key pieces of our strategic strategic plan and understanding how we're progressing towards those and making decisions as we go through the year to address where we might have gaps in other areas. So for me, evaluating that is just the consistent communication with administrators and the organization and other board members to ensure that, yes, we are on the right path academically and both operationally, and I would add in financially, to ensure that we are headed for our goals and we're able to fund and pull ourselves into a position where we can be successful in the future.
Thank you. Nancy Conard, you're next with sixty seconds, please.
As Brian mentioned, we do have a strategic plan and there are five pillars in that plan that we measure, anything we talk about or review or decide. And so that's kind of front and center all the time. The other thing is that we, and this is my fourth year on the board, we have been increasingly asking for more data to measure, especially on academic goals. Let's see where our kids are, what they're doing, how they do last year, just kind of tracking things to make sure that we have firm information that we can measure our progress.
Okay, thank you. And Morgan White, sixty seconds.
Thank you. I think they covered a lot of it, you know, strategic plan. We also have individual board goals and our superintendent has goals. But I think that we have room to grow in setting academic achievement goals. And it's something that we've been talking about, you know, we have a new superintendent. She's been there for one year. It's something that we really want to have. So part of last year, the time that we spent was getting a new software called Data Dashboard, which really combines a lot of our district data, so attendance, discipline, you know, academic performance. And from the collection of that data, we're also using panorama surveys. Then we're going to be able to put together some really more clear goals. So I think that's an area that we want to grow in. And of course, we will continue to monitor and measure those things because that's what we're here for. We're an academic institution and that's what matters to us. So thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to go into our closing statements. And Nancy Conard, you're up first. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Well, if you don't know me, I'd just like to take the opportunity to explain why I think I'm somewhat uniquely qualified to serve on the Coopville School Board. I've lived in Coopville over seventy years. I attended Coopville Schools K through twelve. My husband and I have raised his granddaughter in Coopville Schools, first grade through twelve. I ended up working for the school district for thirty years. Twenty-seven of those years I was the business manager, so I'm very familiar with school finance and accounting and that kind of information. I followed that, well, concurrently. I also was able to serve as mayor of the town of Coopville for twenty years, which gave me an opportunity to interact well with the community. And I've been involved in a lot of community activities. I say all of that because I take my role as an elected official pretty seriously. And I think it's important for me to be open and available to the constituents that I represent. If you look at the voter pamphlet that the county puts out, you'll see my phone number and email is in there. You can call me anytime, bring me questions anytime. When I was mayor, I used to say that the post office was Town Hall North and the grocery store was Town Hall South. And I didn't go to either place unless I was prepared to answer questions. That's how I am, and I hope that I can represent you well by being available to you to answer questions as you have them. We are really fortunate that we have a board that gets along well and generally shares views that are consistent and supportive of our program. And I think it's a nice testament that none of us have opposition.
Thank you very much. Brian Sherman, you're up for your closing statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I will agree with Nancy's last statement there. It's been phenomenal coming onto a board that is open to helping new people on the board learn. So I was appointed last fall to the board. It's been a great learning experience thus far. Like Nancy, I spent my entire life in Coopville. I had about six years that I was away in Seattle, but spent my time on the island and made my way back here several years ago. My family's been ingrained in the community for a very, very long time, has been a part of Coopville's history. My grandparents went to school here, my great-grandparents did, and my kids are going to school here now and my nieces and nephews. And that's really what drives me to be a part of this. I've got a community and board that I'm working with now that's very engaged, very, very thoughtful and caring about what they do. For me, it's carrying that on and ensuring that I can bring a piece of my expertise in finance and accounting from the private sector into what we do in the public sector here and help our school maintain its success that it's had for so many years. I've seen so many good things, a lot of challenges thus far coming in, but so many good things with the school district and how we address the challenges that have come up. And I'm just really looking forward to the next phase of my position on the board here. And I'm grateful to be a part of what we're doing. So thank you all for having us here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Morgan White, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm grateful to share about myself and my love for Coopville Schools. I graduated from Coopville High School as Nancy and Brian in nineteen ninety-eight. Coopville's been a community of people who have encouraged me and cared for me and challenged and supported me. Coopville helped prepare me for adulthood and launched me into a productive life. I served eight years in the Air Force and I hold a bachelor's degree from the Art Institute of Pittsburgh. And I currently work at the Island County Museum and I own and operate a local web and graphics business. My husband and I have two children. Our oldest attended Coopville K-12 and graduated in 2024 and is now attending Gonzaga University. And our youngest attended Coopville K through nine and is now attending a neighboring district for high school. And I just want to be really transparent about that. That was a parenting decision that we made with our child, and I'm happy to discuss that if people have more questions. But my heart and my focus and my energy for Coopville School District remains unchanged. I love this school and this town. I'm committed to our students and our staff and the future of our district. And I continue to volunteer in our district and take as many opportunities as I can to be present in the schools and stay engaged. I'm grateful for our Coopville School Board team and the collaboration and strengths of our board. Strong schools make first-round communities, and we always welcome input and feedback from our community as a partner in the education and growth of our children. In the coming years, our board will humbly ask our community to continue financially supporting our students through a levy and bond. And we believe that an investment in the students of today will be an investment for this community in the future. And that, again, strong schools make for those strong communities, as you can see from our community of school board members who are alumni. Thanks for your amazing support.
Thank you. And thank you to all the Coopville School Board candidates for participating tonight. We're grateful. We're very grateful to you. Now we're going to move on to our Langley City Council candidates who are participating tonight. Eric Thomas Gill, position one. Dominic Emerson, who chose not to participate tonight, and position five, Savannah Erickson.
There's a typo. I am E-R-I-C-K-S-O-N.
You have a typo?
In my email.
Did we spell your name wrong?
There's a K missing, Erickson. It's fine.
I'm sorry.
People will find it elsewhere, I'm sure.
So is your last name then spelled E-R-I-C-K-S-O-N?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, I don't know if she's, okay. So Savannah Erickson, you're going to be up first. You'll have ninety seconds to respond, and here's the first question. How would you address the shortage of affordable housing for local workers, artists, and young families while preventing overdevelopment?
Okay, we're just diving into one of the biggest issues, I think. Langley is looking at affordable housing as really critical in order for our businesses to thrive, in order to have a thriving community. I know that we've been looking at our comp plan and looking at the buildable land that we currently have and how do we zone for that where we maintain the quality of what Langley is and why we love it, but also make room for people who work and make this community thrive. I guess I want to start off by saying that I'm very pro-worker and pro-housing. I would like to see more affordable housing in this community. I know there are people working towards that. I think that this is really a national challenge. This is something that we've failed to address on a national scale. And I really admire and respect everyone who's working towards solving this issue locally. I think it's going to take the full spectrum of support from local to state to any federal programs to help make this a reality. And I'm really excited to see what Langley can become if we really invest in making sure that there's affordable housing for workers, teachers, firefighters, the people that make a community thrive.
Thank you. Thomas Gill, same question to you. You have sixty seconds. We had Thomas Gill.
You're muted.
Is he muted?
Yes.
Uh-oh.
Thomas, you'll need to begin again after unmuting yourself. Not yet. No.
Sorry about that. The computer chose the wrong input.
You gave me a heart attack.
Yes. So we'll start over if you don't mind.
Okay, let me read you the question and then you'll have sixty seconds to respond. How would you address the shortage of affordable housing for local workers, artists, and young families while preventing overdevelopment?
Well, Langley has a unique opportunity. It's the only incorporated community on the South End. And it's the only one who can really do anything to address housing. And as a result, we need to kind of get out of our own way and identify what we need and how best to get it done. That includes creative opportunities, not just for single-family residences, but we need to be looking at multifamily, multi-generational, and various other options that have had some minor success, but we need to be looking at it in a larger scale. Ten units here and ten units there is not going to really solve the extreme issues we've had ever since the Great Recession.
Thank you. Okay, this is question two. Langley's streets, sidewalks, and utilities are aging. How would you prioritize infrastructure upgrades with the city's limited budget? And Thomas Gill, that goes to you first, and you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. There's a lot of things that we need to be working on with all of these utilities, the streets, the sidewalks. But the biggest thing is we have a large portion of the population that is only here a few months of the year and don't contribute their fair share to the use. And we need to find ways to make that more palatable and more equitable with the residents who are here. There have been discussions about levy lid lifts. There have been discussions about special taxes for the streets. And I think we need to have a full community discussion about how do we improve our streets? How do we improve walkability, which by any metric, aside from a few blocks downtown, is poor to just awful. And our utilities, thankfully, we've spent this last year upgrading many portions of our system. But there are many others that still need major addressing. And we have to look at creative ways to get that done through our own funding, as well as looking at outside sources.
Thank you. And Savannah Erickson, that question goes to you, and you have sixty seconds.
So I'm a mom. I have a one-year-old and a two-year-old, and they're becoming more and more mobile every day, but I often am pushing them around in a stroller. And I have to say that there are many areas where that is not an easy thing to do. And I know that that's also a concern for folks who have walkers or other mobility-assisting devices. I think we really have a challenge ahead of us to make sure that we are wise with our spending. And so it's a balance for our budget to ensure that both we are living within our means and continuing to improve our community. I know that there are plans in the works to help address some of these, like curb cuts. Obviously, we are currently under construction everywhere you turn right now. And I know that roads will be repaved, but I'm not sure that there are any sidewalks that are on the line to get replaced.
Thank you. Okay, question three, and Savannah, this will go to you, and you will have ninety seconds. And then Thomas Gill, you'll have the sixty seconds. Okay, what strategies do you support for diversifying Langley's economy so it's less vulnerable to seasonal tourism fluctuations? So it's less vulnerable to seasonal, excuse me, to seasonal tourism fluctuations?
So right now, we have uh businesses that offer meals, that uh have clothes, that offer souvenirs. We have a great thrift shop and chocolate shop, so all of those I tend to uh frequent, but I know that tourists do as well. Uh I do think that there's room to consider our zoning and to expand on where we insist businesses can exist. I have some neighbors who are concerned because they own a residential home, but it's zoned uh for business space, and that really limits what they're allowed to do to modify their homes so that uh they can make it more livable. Uh and so I really think that we need to look at uh where there's housing and where there's zoning for businesses and be reasonable about what, what that future looks like. Um to make more room for businesses that don't just uh work for a tourism economy, but for a thriving um more integrative economy.
Thank you. Thomas, you have two minutes.
It's a hard thing to think about, because the ways that a lot of other communities make good economic sense is to have industry. And it has been brought to the forefront in this community multiple times and been pushed aside as something we don't want. And I think we need to have that discussion again. We need to be building things here. We need to be doing things here. And that can help to stabilize our economy to be less vulnerable to tourism. But we also need to reinvest the monies we get through the tourism taxes into events that occur outside of the traditional tourism season. We've had a lot of success in the past, and unfortunately, thanks to COVID, a lot of that went away. And we need to really have those discussions and working with the chamber, with the Main Street, and with the other businesses to try to get something going.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move into our closing statements, and each of you will have two minutes. And uh Savannah Erickson, you will start.
Well, I want to say first of all, thank you to everyone for coordinating this event, and for those who uh showed up. I know that it's a moment of uh questioning what local politics and politics in general are all about, and I'm excited to show up. Uh I'm excited to participate. I am currently serving as one of three uh Southwoodby Fire and EMS commissioners. Uh I love that work uh with a great passion, and I'm very excited to step up uh and serve our Langley City Council. Uh as I mentioned, I'm a mother of two, uh two little boys. Um I'm, I have my, I live in Langley with my husband. We have a dog and six ducks. And um I'm really passionate about public service, and so I'm uh really eager to participate in our Langley City Council and how we govern ourselves. I believe that government is us coming together to do what we cannot do by ourselves. Um I firmly believe in accountability, transparency, and effective communication, and those are things that I want to make sure uh happen within city council and how we communicate to the public. Let's see, um I've lived here for five years. I know that uh that's not a long time for some, but uh I jumped right in as soon as I could, as soon as I got here. And um the first time I came to Langley, I said, this feels like home. And so I'm really glad to be a community member here and know all the people that I do. And I'm looking forward to meeting more of you and finding out what you want to see in Langley for the future.
Thank you. And Thomas Gill, you have two minutes.
Well, I'd like to thank the League and Snow Isle for arranging this forum, uh and everyone, everyone in attendance and everyone participating. Uh this is always a very interesting time to uh see what, what we talk about, what we think, and to hear what other candidates think. Um as for, as for me, Langley is my home. I've been here thirty-six years. And I've seen the ups and the downs, and I'm afraid we've got a lot to do to ensure Langley continues in the future. We need to be very mindful about the money that we spend as a city, the impact that our needs have on our community, financial and ecological. And we need to, at the very least, come up with goals that we can achieve. Little milestones that make us better. Be that with housing, be that with uh solving our Airbnb issue, be that figuring out how to increase our city income without increasing taxes. Uh there are numerous things that we can do, and we need to have those serious and frank discussions about what it's going to take to keep Langley viable and be that city that can actually keep not just Langley, the one square mile, but the entire South would be engaged, because we kind of have that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, thank you to both of you, uh Langley City Council candidates for participating tonight. And now we will move, proceed with our Q and A for the panel um of, from Southwoodby School District Board. Andrea Downs for position two, Gwendy Gabelson for, and Ann Johnson for position five. Okay, um question number one for Southwoodby School Board. National test scores have revealed very low academic loves, uh levels in STEM areas. What can you, as a school board member, do to improve the academic outcomes of Southwoodby students? And um this question goes to Ann Johnson for position five, and she has ninety seconds. You have ninety seconds.
Thank you so much. This is a great question, and this is true of many schools, like it says, in the national area because of COVID, because of students struggling with their mental health outcomes. And I feel like Southwoodby School District is uh well-equipped to continue to build and consistently increase test scores. If you look at our test scores across the state, we are absolutely ahead and out in front of many other states. And I'm very proud of that. Uh countywide, our county does well. And so I relate that to the power of our teaching staff, our administrators. Uh we just hired a new superintendent who has amazing skills and experience with special ads and children with special needs. And with the ability to consistently maintain and increase those test scores. I think what we can do as the board is continue to build good policy and continue to update policies as needed, as they relate to academic issues. And I think we can also trust our academic and professional experts to do their work in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Downs, position two, you have sixty seconds.
All right. I'm also really excited about this question, just to kind of help echo some of Ann's um points. Uh we are well ahead of the curve of um national and state test scores. Sixty-seven point six percent of our students are meeting standards in math, and seventy-two point four percent are meeting standards in science. You can check that information at reportcard.OSPI.K twelve dot W A dot U S and just look up Southwoodby School District. I think additionally, you know, what we can do as school members is the work that we've been doing. Um I'm going into my third term on the school district, uh the school board this year. And uh in my first term, we rewrote the curriculum policy. And we rewrote it to model it off of um Everett Public Schools curriculum policy, which required us to take a look at any curriculum that we adopt from multiple perspectives to ensure that it supports students um who are English language learners, students um who have special education support needs, and um also with an equity lens. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwendy Gabelin, you have sixty seconds to respond.
All right, thank you for having me. Great question. Um as far as improving scores, um I think that is an area we have a lot of improvement that we can do. Um we need to be consistently talking and partnering with our educators and ac- and administrative staff. Um a recent C E E survey showed that staff don't feel supported, um that they can't suggest change, uh which that can roll over into the classroom. Another element that was pointed out in the recent C E survey is students don't feel element of support in the sense of they don't feel they have a person they can reach out to. So if you take those two elements uh into the equation, um that can definitely affect overall academic scores, uh whether it be levels in STEM areas or across the board. Um so I think our, our thing that we really need to focus on is making sure those, those individuals feel supported. Um we can work as a team. Um the recent superintendent search showed that despite the recommendations of the staff, the board chose to go with someone else. Oh, thank you.
Okay, question number two. How will you handle conflicts around policies related to diversity, equity, and inclusion? And Gwendy uh Gabelson, Gabelin, I'm sorry, um you have ninety seconds.
That's also a great question. So how do we handle conflicts around policies related to diversity, equity, and inclusion? I think a huge element that is lacking on our board is the ability to be balanced and have these tough, tough conversations and see things from different viewpoints. So when I say balanced, um that's looking at the viewpoint from more than one direction, um and that involves having those tough conversations. Um a lot of, a, a lot of importance falls on diversity, equity, inclusion. It's how our students feel. It's how they feel in the culture of their, of their classroom. Um and as well on the concept of, of how our teachers feel in the classroom. Uh they are tasked with that, teaching the students. That's a huge, huge uh job. And we need to make sure our policies support them, support our students, no matter how an individual, whether it be gender identity, a student's ability. Um I'm a mother of a special ed student, so this is huge for me, making sure that all students have the opportunity to learn and access uh education is, is a huge, huge element to me. So I would make this a huge priority to, to look at and have those tough conversations from different viewpoints, and that's what our board needs.
Thank you. Andrea Downs, you are next, and you have sixty seconds.
Thank you. Um I believe the way that we handle the conflicts around the policies is that we stay centered and grounded on the students. And we specifically stay centered and grounded on the students that are exposed to the most amount of harm if we do nothing. So if we take a look, for example, at something around uh restorative practices, that's something that we implemented in the district, the board's role is really to look at the what, and it is the superintendent's role to roll out the how. Um I think from a board perspective, it's about us being transparent. It's about us being people that people can come and speak to, whether they want to do that publicly at a board meeting or privately um one-on-one. And then it's about us supporting the students at the center with how we um move forward in um developing policies that protect all students.
Thank you. And Ann Johnson, you have sixty seconds as well.
Thank you so much. I love this question. It is absolutely within my wheelhouse as an educator um for over twenty years in the district uh and in the school, and in the community. Um student voice is very important to us on the school board. Uh we have two student reps. We have been doing that for a long time. And we are always listening to what they have to say about their experience in the classroom. And when we start there in a stu- student-centered place, we're more able to educate ourselves around what kids are experiencing uh in the room while they're learning and in the school building during the school day. I think the other thing we can do is make sure that we are building things. Um we want to move forward. We want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of, like Andrea said, meeting the needs of the most vulnerable students. Um that's a component of universal design that we can use when building policy, because it speaks to what is good for everyone is also going to be good for the most vulnerable.
Thank you. Okay, question three is um how will you ensure transparency in budgeting decisions so the public can easily track where tax dollars are going? And Andrea, you get the first uh crack at this, so you have ninety seconds.
I am so glad I get ninety seconds for this question. Um the first thing that we do is, we do it every board meeting. We go through the numbers. We put them up on the big screen. I don't know if people know, but that's not typical in board meetings. Not everybody puts their numbers up on the big screen. Um as I say, stated, I will be completing my second term. Um I've had the honor of working alongside both Dan Pooleman and Paul Field, who have done an amazing job supporting our district through incredibly challenging financial times. And they've done it in a way where we are so much better primed for the financial storm that is hitting education right now. Um because we have been so transparent and because we have been so on top of that budget. Um I remember looking at our fund balance spend down, which we are planning to spend down some of our fund balance this year. That decision was known eight years ago. Um we sat in board meetings and we talked about how with the, the reduction of the McCleary funds and with the reduction of specifically the regionalization and um the pay that we received for having a more senior staff that we would be pulling from our fund balance in exactly the ways that we are pulling. So um I would say we're going to continue doing what we're doing. If you have questions about the budget, come see me.
Thank you. Um Ann Johnson, you have sixty seconds.
Thank you so much. Um I will say that finances have always been a growth edge for me. Although as an executive director of a local nonprofit, I definitely have to uh w- work with my own board in order to build a financial plan that works for our season and our year. I have learned so much from our financial team, uh including the superintendent and our financial directors in how budgets work, where funds go, um which silos funds fit into. Uh there are only certain things that certain funds will pay for, and it has been a huge help to me. I always say that I love anything with a graphic, because I'm going to understand it as a visual person. And I feel so much more confident after five years on the board to speak to financial things that are board, board-based uh and district-based. So I will also echo, echo Director Downs's uh thoughts around uh the fact that we are absolutely uh transparent and clear around where our budget is and what it's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Gwendy Gable- Gabelin, you have the last crack, and you have sixty seconds.
All right. Thank you, guys. Um this is a great, great question, um because that is definitely one thing I plan on bringing to the board is transparency around budget decisions. An example would be the recent bond. I did vote against it, not because um I don't think our students should have a environment where they can learn and thrive. It was because the amount. And a lot of the amount came from deferred maintenance and lack of maintenance and oversight. So I think that amount didn't need to be that high for our community members, in a sense. Uh when it comes down to budget, I think a really important thing to keep in mind is transparency is huge. But also, we need to be good stewards of our money, and asking for an extension for two years in a row, and especially when we knew it was coming. Uh we need to show that we are good stewards of our money, and we can plan ahead and kind of look at, okay, instead of, instead of asking to use more of our back- instead of, instead of asking to use more of our backup, if you will, we need to relook at our budget and see what that looks like moving forward. Knowing that you're going to go in the red in, in five to eight years does not show good stewardship of being of public funds. So that's what I'd like to improve.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the Southwoodby School Board candidates for participating. Oh, but first we're going to have, sorry, the two minutes. You'll each have two minutes for your closing statements. And we're going to go in alphabetical order. So Andrea Downs, you will go first, please.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for tonight. It has been an honor to serve the Southwoodby School Board for the past eight years. And I am seeking a third term to continue building the progress that we've been making together. My priorities are really clear. Advancing academic achievement, ensuring responsible stewardship of district resources through our bond, and strengthening trust through open communication and authentic community engagement. As a professional who has sixteen years of experience in special education, both as a classroom teacher and as an administrator, I bring a deep understanding of how to support students with diverse learning needs. And every student deserves the opportunity to succeed regardless of their background or circumstance. And that belief has truly guided my work. I'm often the board member who is thinking of our students who qualify under McKinney-Vento services, the board member who thinks of our students who receive special education support services, and the student, the board member who is considering those students who are the furthest away from educational justice. During my time on the board, I've been proud to help steward a strong fiscal position, maintaining a fund balance of around twenty percent and passing a facilities bond to invest in a safe and updated learning environment. I was also honored to serve on the superintendent search committee that brought Dr. Clifford to Southwoodby. And I'm excited that her leadership, paired with a strong community partnerships that I know she will grow and build, will help rebuild confidence in our schools and increase enrollment. With enrollment beginning to rise, we have a unique opportunity to keep momentum moving forward. And I'm committed to ensuring that our district remains a place where students thrive, families feel welcomed, and the community sees the value of the investment in public education.
Thank you. And Wendy Gabelin, you are up next. You have two minutes, man.
Thank you for this time again for organizing. I really appreciate this opportunity for our community. I'm a graduate of Southwoodby High School. My dad's also a graduate of Southwoodby High School, so we've got a lot of history. I was born and raised on the island. I've been attending the school board meetings for now nine years. I have a son that graduated and one that is now in high school, which is kind of scary. I'm a proud mom of an autistic spicy, as I call it, son, which gives me a whole nother view as far as the needs of all students, no matter their ability or gender identity. I've worked in both the public and private school sector, which brings knowledge from both types of schools. My degree in Health and Human Services brings knowledge to the table. As well as my job as a substance abuse counselor, my, my main focus is advocacy. And that's what I'll bring to our district for our students. I'm also, as far as strong schools, I believe that statement, strong schools make strong community. That is a huge element that's missing in our district as Andrea described the the functionality of the board. The board is the what and the superintendent is the how. But I think we're missing that component of the who, which is the community, which is the students, which is the staff. And I am committed to bringing a voice to that and bringing them to the table. So when we're discussing policy, when we're discussing finances and things of that nature, that they have a voice at that table. I want to bring balance to our board in the sense of I want all viewpoints, not just the viewpoints of the person sitting in those, those chairs, but also the viewpoint to the community and the staff and the students. Because I think that is what our district is lacking and that is what I will bring to the board. I am committed to our students, staff and community, not just for today. I've been doing it for the last eight or nine years and I plan on doing it for many more. So I appreciate everyone's vote and again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. And Ann Johnson, you will be the, the last candidate to, for her two-minute closing.
Okay, thank you so much. And thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Snow Isle and to everyone who participated today and also got to put this together. I'm running for reelection because schools need excellent, up-to-date education so kids can continue to learn and grow and have the freedom to learn and grow. Schools are a hub and reflection of the larger community. I'm a trained educator. I have been in the school district here for twenty years. My, I have two successful SWSD alums, classes of twenty-one and twenty-three. I'm currently the executive director at Woodby Children's Theater and I work with kids and families every day. And that's the work I've done for the last several years. Before that, I was a classroom teacher. So I've seen the inside of the classroom and I've also seen how this community helps kids outside the classroom and make sure they are ready to be in that classroom. I have also done substance abuse training specialization for Washington State. I was a team member of Readiness to Learn, which is a basic needs helping organization focusing on kids who are at risk or homeless and helping their families get their basic needs taken care of. And I'm a graduate of Leadership Woodby from two thousand and four. My passions are high-quality, student-first, equitable education. I feel like kindness, collaboration and empathy, those have always been my watchwords as someone who educates kids and works with families. And they're also the cornerstones of excellent schools. The fact that kids belong and they feel that their identity is powerful to them and that they are represented and seen and heard is my, is my wheelhouse. That's where I, that's where I sit. That's where my heart sits. And that's where my work has sat for the last twenty-five years plus. And that is my goal as I continue on with the school district. I'm so proud of the work we did. We passed a bond with over sixty percent of the community behind us, knowing that those updates and modernizations were going to be powerful for future students. We are consistently increasing test scores. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank all three of you women for, uh, school board candidates for participating in our forum this evening. That concludes our questions for this evening. Thank you again to all of our candidates for participating and for our audience who attended. I also want to recognize Carla Egerton, Form Committee Chair, and my fellow Form Committee members for all their hard work. In addition, I want to thank our timekeeper Joanna Rooms and Carol Poliam and Karen Bolseth for making our virtual forums a success. Remember, if you've moved recently or haven't yet registered to vote, you can do so online or by mail until October twenty-seventh. You can also register in person at Island County Elections Office until Election Day, November fourth. Thank you all for coming and having, and have a good evening.